But there's no, we're lying.
Okay, before we get started, we're not gonna tolerate any outbursts. This is your only warning. If you do, and you don't, well, I'm gonna ask you to leave.
Well, it's kind of a special meeting. You just got one or so skills.
Yeah. You have three people plus you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. There's, we agreed yesterday for Brett's gonna have three people plus yourself. We're gonna discuss this. This meeting between all of us here.
Me and Grant Johnson, City Council, help order. Looks like the first thing we had on here is fixing three pumps on fire trucks. Do you have a discussion on that or vote on that anyway or what?
Um, we can discuss it. Um, do you want to tell them how it happened or?
Um, first off, I'm just gonna start telling each of the fire department. I think I've told you all this before, but I'm not against you by any means. Um, I am, we're just trying to work together. Um, yesterday brought to my attention that three pumps did not pass inspection, needed to be fixed. Here's the deal. I'm not going out looking at your fire trucks. I don't have a clue what a good or bad pump looks like. You know that. And so your, your firemen came to us and told us this. So that's how I even know about it, okay? Um, in the discussion with this particular person, um, said they're gonna get fixed. And I said, how about a bid? What are we looking at? You know, I get it, we gotta fix them. But that's how, you know, left it that, that there would be, they were just gonna get fixed. And I said, how about a bid? How about, how much is this gonna cost? How much did three? Are they all in the same despair? And he, Mark, never told me, you know, what the price was, how, what kind of this we were up against. So I think that is exactly where we are at. We need to know a little more about this and what it's gonna cost and entail to have three trucks fixed and get up to speed. Mark also told us that they're supposed to be checked yearly and they haven't been. Why haven't they been? That's another concern I think I'm gonna pull out of this whole conversation. So with that being said, that's where this is coming from. Can some, one of you tell us about the three pump, more about these three pumps or pumper trucks or whatever that need to be fixed?
So they're supposed to be annually certified for pump testing. Um, you're right. Last year they were not. We were already short with our city budget. So certain things, we needed to wait. It didn't get done in time. We got it done now. Two trucks failed. Uh, one truck is near failing. I don't really wanna wait for it to fail, especially when caught in time.
Can I stop you just a minute?
Sure.
They are supposed to be checked annually. What does that cost to have a check, uh, a truck?
It's
Checked?
Two hundred and something truck?
Plus mileage.
Plus mileage.
And who does the check? Who checks them for you?
Uh, what is that company, Mark?
Burn, she, uh, burn, she's, uh, vehicle services.
Where are they at?
Somewhere in Minnesota. I'd have to go get that.
That's okay. So roughly two hundred plus per check, per truck annually to get checked?
Times three, yes.
Right, okay. And is it just the pumps it checks or does it check this truck from, from bumper to bumper or different things?
No, it's mostly just pumps, uh, the, the valves, the gauges, pressure testing.
Two truck, two trucks failed.
Two trucks failed, yeah.
The third truck, what was, it's close to
It's borderline.
But in the conversation, a truck got damaged or something on Sunday at the dump when you were doing something? Okay, no.
It didn't get damaged. It wasn't more than
So there, so there was no?
I mean, we had a truck go down, yeah.
Oh, okay, but it didn't have to do with the pump or whatever. It was being inspected, you're saying.
Right, I care. Right.
So we have three, two trucks for sure, one truck that needs, it's gonna need some help. And now you have another truck that needs something done to it.
No, so we have three pumper's altogether.
Okay.
Two of which failed.
Right.
One, the one that did break down failed. Uh, the other one failed and then the other one is on the brink.
I believe what you're asking is, is there another repair bill besides the pumps?
Right, exactly, exactly.
No, I don't think so, no.
Okay, okay. I just, it's the three trucks essentially is all we're talking about that are gonna need work that you know of.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay.
Did they give you an estimated cost on what this is? Are we looking at ten thousand dollars a truck or are we looking at two thousand dollars a truck?
It's gonna be somewhere between five and six thousand for all three.
For all three trucks? Okay, that was something else that we were not, you know, we tried to get some kind of an idea yesterday, what's this gonna cost? But we don't know. It's, it's already been done.
And I told you, I didn't know 'cause we wouldn't know until they found out all the parts. As it sits right now, we're looking at five or six thousand.
Well, do you see, wanted to get digging into that, they're gonna find more?
I, I wouldn't foresee so, no, honestly.
Is this parts or gaskets or?
Parts, gaskets, labor, mileage.
So the other two trucks weren't, you say that you had to wait because you didn't have enough money in your budget to do it the last year? They were all certified the year before that?
I could, I don't know, I was chief.
Who was chief then? Were they certified the year before that?
No.
Were they certified the year before that?
No.
Okay, and here's a question. When were they certified? Do you have any idea? When were they last certified?
One truck was certified two years ago. Forty-two would've been certified, that was the last one that was certified, that was twelve, ten eleven. It was a year before we got twelve.
Why?
We got records on each truck.
So how long have you been fire chief?
Since April of two one, twenty-one.
And so even when you came on, you didn't check to make sure all of these were certified?
Oh, we knew they weren't, but we didn't have any money. And I asked for more money and was told no.
Don't you know?
It's, it's been one of his priorities to get him certified since he changed.
Do you know when that, when the city council, one month it was, they told you that?
One month it was, can you know?
I think part of the problem with some of this is there's a lack of communication, at least I feel like with this council and the fire department. I, I don't know what happened before I got on council, but I feel like we need a little more communication between the fire department and us. We need to know more about what's going on. I, I would like to see a, um, written, uh, notes every, every month, a report saying you had this many, um, fire calls, you had this many rescue calls, all that. Um, we should, we should be having that. Is there, um, we, we've got a lot of trucks, um, for the amount of area that we, that we have.
We cover a very large area.
Yes, we do. Um,
And do you know how many trucks this takes to put out a fire?
Depends on the size of the fire, I'm guessing.
And I'm guessing that you guys aren't the only ones that are there. We do have backup from other communities.
But they expect that in return.
Excuse me? Oh, are you one of them that is speaking? Yes.
Yeah, no. No, I'm not.
Um, so here, we have Mary here who has found budget-wise. Mary, would you like to speak to us regarding what you found on the budget?
For fiscal year two thousand, um, so fiscal year is July two thousand twenty-one to June two thousand twenty-two. And then July two thousand twenty-two to July, or July two thousand twenty-two to June two thousand twenty-three. For the fiscal year, July two thousand twenty-one to June two thousand twenty-two, this past fiscal year, um, you've expensed forty-two thousand, six hundred, sixty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents. Your budget was twenty-four thousand, three hundred fifty-four dollars. So you overspent by eighteen thousand, three hundred fifteen dollars and ninety-six cents. So going into this fiscal year, you're way in the hole. This year, the budget, um, whoever did the budget, uh, we just found it. Um, because it was not in their computer system. We had to go to the state website. It shows the city is generous in giving you twenty-four thousand dollars for your, for your operating budget. This is operating. This is not purchasing vehicles. Um, the operating is, is, and according to this agreement, the city is only supposed to house your vehicles and pay the utilities technically. The township, yes, the township, the township pay whatever they give you for their, through the levy. Is what you technically should be using for operating. I'm the city clerk of the city of Ruby. I've been the city clerk for many, many years. This is, and I've been over this. It's, it, this is how it's supposed to, and this is how technically it is stated in this, in this, there's that, your, your levy money from the township, per this is supposed to be given to the first party, which is the town of Grand Junction. And then we're supposed to put it in the budget and it's part of your operating. It's not a slut, for a slush fund. It's, it goes for, um, your fuel, your, uh, equipment and so forth. That's technically the only money that you really should have for operating. But the city is giving you additional to, to help you operate. So for this fiscal year, you have twenty-four thousand dollars. Currently
That would've been very nice to know at the beginning of the fiscal year.
Brett, if we had any part in that, your old agreement, we had any
No, I'm not, I'm talking about the city budget. You're talking about these numbers, but I wasn't given numbers to go off of. And every time I ask, well, we're working on it. Well, we're working on it. You, the city council approved money and not know what any of the budgets were?
The previous clerks did not
Not talking about
add into the computer and the books are a mess. I can guarantee, I can promise, the books are a mess. So we're trying to get those books in order, but given what I, we found, the twenty-four thousand dollars is for the, is the fire department plus whatever you've received from the township for your levy. You've already expensed eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars for this fiscal budget. And, um, so with that and what you've overspent last year, you technically have none.
That was never communicated to me. And do you always carry over budgets?
No, technically no.
Right.
So I started fresh this year.
But they can, they can allow carryover.
So was that voted on to allow carryover?
Like, if it's approved, if you bring it to them, if you have, if you have excess funds and you bring it to the council before budget and ask them to carry it over, they can.
Correct, but did they carry over our debt? Did they approve the carryover debt?
Their, your debt was just paid out of their general fund because
Right, but my question is
the previous clerk should've told you and stopped you and said, you have no more money.
Correct, but you just stated that we're out of money because we went over our previous budget?
Technically, if they, if it was carried over. It's not carried over.
Then, then that doesn't matter. I don't care about that though.
But you see what I'm saying?
I understand, I understand. But that last year is gone now.
What did you get for levy? Your levy money that you got from the township should've been put in here, which I don't see any, anything that you've ever given the city for that.
The township should give you the levy money.
Yes, and that goes into your, your, uh, into your
So that's a discussion with the township, not with us.
Well, they, did they just give you a check?
No.
No?
No. Didn't ever gotten any, you've never gotten any levy money?
You've never gotten any money.
That's why I say, that's a conversation for you and the township, not us.
Did they give it to us or did they give it to?
The township hasn't given.
The township gives it to the department or the whatever.
No, it shouldn't go to the city. That's what we're
I know what you're saying, but I know, she's saying something different, so I can
I can find it.
We haven't got it.
So not this year or not ever?
The, the township buys
What is the township?
Pardon?
What is the township name?
Junctionship.
Junction Township, okay.
And you started to say, Brett, the township buys
The township buys or r- r- assets.
They buy your what?
Our, our trucks.
They buy your trucks?
Yeah.
Correct, and that's totally separate from your levy money?
Correct, right.
So your levy money is your general operating money?
Correct.
That pays for your fuel, any equipment, any, any, uh, apparatus, any few, any expenses for vehicles and so forth.
Right, and that, and that agreement that you showed earlier, yeah, go ahead, Jack.
Yeah, Brett asked me to come over here to speak and as Sheriff Boggs, I've been just mentor of the cities, doing what the state code asks and not to shout by fire protection.
Yeah.
So does this contract basically make the fire department their own entity?
This contract?
Cause that's what I'm reading.
Well, the contract you've read it, it's dated nineteen sixty-three? That's, that's the contract?
Yeah, it's updated.
Yeah, but I'm just, I'm asking, does that contract state that they're their own entity?
Okay, here's what I wanna tell you. Whenever, when I had this discussion with Mark yesterday, he's the one that threw in our face. That we have a contract from nineteen sixty-two, we gotta uphold it. Well, if we uphold it, we're gonna uphold it for a truck, cause that's what this says. One truck. It doesn't say multiple trucks. And again, I'm not trying to say I don't want a fire department. I'm, I, I'm not, I just
Well, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but that is a, a agreement between the township and the city, not us.
But this is what you guys are basing all your stuff on. When, when you get another vehicle, it's thrown in our face and it has been, you have to house our vehicles. You have to provide this, you have to provide that. And Mark stated to us yesterday, it goes by the, by the contract that we had. And I specifically said, the nineteen sixty-three contract, and he said, again, not our fault. So if that's the way you want to say it, are
Can I speak on that then?
Are you one of the four?
I don't know.
Mark, from Mark.
You know
She talked all along, which, please go ahead, Jack.
My point, uh, I, when I became fire chief and I worked with Assistant Chief John Schultz and Randy Love, when he was still around, the state has a formula that tells what the city will pay, what the township will pay. But most small departments aren't aware that that even exists. So Jefferson, for example, the city of Jefferson pays sixty percent of our budget. The townships pay the remaining forty percent. And how that, and I can provide the formula. It's a very easy formula. You just fill in the blanks and it tells you what percentage is off. But it's also probably going to increase Junction's share.
Well, here's the deal. The, the tax base isn't here to support all of that money that you might be wanting. We're not growing. Uh, we was, the last time they had a census, I think we was at eight hundred. We're now down to seven hundred people. We don't have any of the businesses like we used to. Uh, where's the tax base to support all of this?
No, I, I totally understand what you're saying.
See, that's where the, we definitely need the fire protection.
That's, I'm just trying to explain the different ways of doing it.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, they need to see the tax base like it used to be.
Cause I went and looked at the auditor, I believe Pam was talking about.
Pardon me?
Yeah, to Pam Olrich while I was there. And the townships have money in their account for fire protection.
Well, it must be
So I wonder if it's
Must be something there that's
lifting this, it makes me wonder if maybe it's just not, it's only being paid out when built for a new truck or something like that. Cause they have money in their fire protection budgets.
Just, uh,
So I, to me, it sounds like this is more of a, instead of city council versus fire department kind of thing, this is something where maybe we need to have meetings with townships.
The township should be here for this.
Yeah, and say, how has this worked in the past? How can we figure this out to better things for all of us?
Well, one thing that, that we need is better communication between the fire department. Um, I, it appears to me that, um, whenever something is needed, it's just gotten because you have money in the budget, so
And, and according to the city's code, I have the right to do so.
Who is your, who is your boss? Do you answer to anybody then as fire chief? Who, who is your boss?
The mayor. It's the mayor by city code.
And so do you ever get a call from him saying, hey, we wanna order five pair of new boots or anything like that?
No, because you're not listening to me, Paula. By your city code, I do not have to.
Yeah, it's in the code, you don't have to.
By the city's
You don't have to answer to anybody. Your money that, that the city gives you in your budget, you can just spend however you want?
As long as my single, a single purchase I make is under ten thousand dollars, I do not. That is according to the Grand Junction city code, I have a right.
We need to read those, that kind of
We need to read those at the code.
The, the townships?
We read.
Oh, you're not. They control the fire trucks. There, there's ones that purchase the fire trucks. They, and they give, they give the fire department levy money per year. And the city is responsible for housing it and the utilities of the building. They're, um, it's a volunteer fire department, is that correct?
We're volunteer, correct.
There should be no wages. The city should not be paying wage, uh, any type of wages. Um, they do, are required to pay work comp for the fire depart, firefighters. But that's it. Any other insurance is not for the city to pay. It would come out of your levy money or any money the city does provide you, um, for your, as a budget. On, in addition to the levy. So you'll need to contact the, um, township, ask them to come to your next council meeting and have discussions with them and rewrite that agreement.
Do we, do we wanna do a council meeting or do we wanna do like a workshop so that we can?
You can do a workshop.
You know?
Hash everything out and then, once the city, once the council, uh, convenes at their next meeting, then you can vote.
Jack, you had, is that what?
I was gonna suggest, that's what Jefferson does. We have a meeting every November, December with the townships. We usually do a three-year agreement with the townships. This is what your base fee is. And then if they agree to add three cents per hundred thousand of value to save money to purchase a truck. And in Jefferson, I put in what they call a capital fund that rolls over every year. So that the fund keeps building every year, so that every six years, we should be able to buy a new truck. And then the townships also agree sometimes to just outright pay for one. But it's usually the townships buy one, the city buys one, the townships, so on and so forth. But we usually have that increased money from those meetings to set aside for just new trucks.
Check with the auditor to see if that is being utilized for the city.
How many trucks does the city of Jefferson have?
Uh, seven.
It would be in there.
How many trucks does Grand Junction have?
Yeah, or fire trucks, one, a rescue truck and two ambulances.
The ambulance is coming out of a different fund, right?
That is correct, yeah. And, and the rescue truck.
Additional
And the rescue truck.
The rescue and the ambulance comes out of a different fund?
Yeah.
So who, who pays that fund?
So that one is, it, so the, it's called, we call it the billing account on the fire department. Um, that one is, it is technically a city fund, um, that was set up when, Terry?
Probably
Early two thousands, maybe?
Yeah.
Around the early two thousands. I don't know the exact date. And all the money we get, like when we go on an ambulance call or a car accident and we bill for it, that goes back into that account and that account only. And that money's used to maintain and buy equipment for those three vehicles.
So it says really nothing coming out of the city then?
Ah, not, not a dime, just insurance. Just, yeah, just insurance.
Here's one other question maybe for Jack. Uh, you know, as you're seeing all these small towns declining, at the rate we're going, not in five, six years down the road, we're gonna be down to six hundred people and probably less businesses too. So where do we get that money? And where are we gonna come up with that money to do all of those things? I mean, besides everything that has to be done in the town, besides, I know we have to have firework, where is all? At some point in time, uh, you're gonna have to cut back on some, some things. And maybe, maybe every department's gonna have to cut back. I mean, it's, you don't have the people, I mean, there's not a thousand people in Grand, Grand Junction anymore. I mean, uh, it's down to seven hundred now. We, the businesses are gone. The schoolhouse was the biggest employer. They're, they're just not, that tax base is, is not there. So things are gonna have to get cut. Things are gonna have, we're gonna have to do with probably less because we don't have the money. We're gonna have less money. Uh, we're gonna have to realize that someplace here in the near future. I mean, the money won't be there.
Why would the first thing you cut be fire protection?
What's that?
Why would the first thing you cut be fire protection?
It wouldn't be, but I mean, I said, every department's probably gonna have to cut back. I mean, you don't have the people now. You don't have the houses, the businesses, uh, like you did before. But you gotta have, you've got more trucks than you had before with less businesses and less people. So I mean, it doesn't
That doesn't mean we run any less calls.
Well, it, I, well, how can they do it then with that many people with, uh, those few vehicles before?
I don't know, I wasn't there.
That doesn't make sense though, you just, what you just said. If there's less people, there is less calls.
No.
No.
So you're telling me, the less kind of people, you got more calls because people are
So just to address that there, Jefferson covers about the same amount of township or rural areas as Grand Junction. We average about a hundred fifty calls a year in Jefferson. Junction covers almost as big of an area as we do. And I can vouch that they do have a lot of calls outside of the city of Grand Junction. That's where, and I'd be willing to come and help with the townships to sit down and discuss how we can fund it and still keep it. As long as Junction has these twenty-eighty agreements from Clearback, God knows where. The townships are just as responsible by Iowa code as the city is to provide adequate fire protection. So they have just as much fight in it as you guys do. But the rural areas have more money because they have more taxable value. So if Brett had a list of the fire calls from last year, we could dump that into this formula that the state gave to us. And it would show them what they should be paying, which I imagine is probably going to significantly increase the money coming from Grand Junction just from the rural areas because their, their values on farm, ag land and all that just went through the roof the last couple of years. And that's all set by levy that the townships can adjust. And most of them have room to do so.
Well, that makes sense, but it just, we need to start seeing some of that.
And that's the township.
Yeah, that's the town. Visit with the tap press keys.
Yes, and that's, that's what I'm doing this month with the township trustees for Jefferson's history. Is having a meeting, maybe we'll provide some type of a meal like pizza or something like that. And we sit down and talk about it and go over what the taxable valuations were for this year, going into next year so that they have a budget for that. Cause their budgets, I believe, were due in February and March. And so you pretty much have to start now, just months, so that they can start planning for it. But that's, for me, seeing what I'm hearing and seeing is the easiest fix for all of this is have the township meeting so that you actually know and figure out where the money's been going, if it's been going anywhere or if it's just sitting in their account.
Cause it has to be, I got farmland, if you read that, I pay fire protection.
Yeah, everybody pays fire protection. It's just what, what are the townships, are they holding on to the money? They know what they're supposed to be paying, are they holding on to it? My big question right now is, where's the money went?
Tell me, why can this township
Tell me, what can this township money be spent on? Fire trucks or?
Everything.
Everything.
For the levy, everything.
For the city of Jefferson, for example, the townships each pay five, six thousand dollars, whatever it may be, per year to the city of Jefferson. And then the city of Jefferson takes, and it's by the formula by percentage of calls in each township. So they pay the, like, say if, and I don't know what it is, but if North Junction Township had seventy percent of fire calls and the city of Junction had two percent of fire calls, that township's gonna pay the lion's share of the budget. Cause it, it's a formula that was developed by the state to make sure it's fair and equal so that you don't have a small town of six, seven hundred who's paying a hundred percent of the budget when ninety percent of the calls outside of the city. And I'd be more than willing to come and help and have the meetings to, to better everything and stop this kind of stuff. Cause this does nothing for anybody.
Thank you.
That sounds like we better do something in the meantime.
I may have the list of the township trustees on my truck.
One, one just left.
Yeah.
He had a music concert.
Tim Coligan used to be on it.
Now he's more, he lives in Jefferson.
But anyway, we've gotta, we gotta take care of fixing three pumps.
Can I ask a question? What did you say that, that the money that you get for the calls, what does that pay for?
That's, that's a rescue account, that has nothing to do with what we're talking about.
But Red, I know it's a rescue account, but what did you say pays for?
It pays for maintaining and buying equipment for the rescue vehicles. Two ambulances and our rescue truck.
So the pumps are not, that you're referring to are not on the rescue vehicle?
No.
Okay.
If they were, we wouldn't be.
Think of ambulances.
But the calls that you're on, that you charge for, are they fire calls and stuff?
No.
Rescue calls.
Okay, just, I didn't know, cause we don't have a rescue.
Right.
Um, so I was just wondering.
Yep. And fire calls are kind of a different piece as far as charging. If they're in your fire district that live in your fire district legally, you can not charge them anything, cause they're already paying taxes. Unless it's O W Y related or has nothing to do with it.
Well, I think we, we need to uh, vote on these three pumps. We need to have the fire truck working, and then we need to sit here and discuss how we're gonna visit with the trustees.
Right.
I'll make the motion that we pay for the three pumps to be fixed.
I will second that motion. I would like to say, we need to keep, if they're supposed to be inspected annually, we want them inspected annually. And so, you should be able to provide um, information on that. And are there any other trucks that need inspected that have not been?
No.
These are the only things that is out there that have not been done.
Everything else is updated.
And I would like to suggest that we keep doing this, and we need to open the road of communication better. Um, I should go ahead and finish this open, then we'll. Because I seconded.
I do.
Oh, I.
Okay, that's fast, but you wanna set up something now, or do you wanna?
Well, we need to contact.
Yeah, we need to contact and then, and set up, you know, a, a meeting. Um, our next council meeting is the twelve, twelve as well. So, um, I don't know, we'll have to see what, you know, when they're available and, and go from there. I don't know.
When we set that up, are we gonna have three or four representatives there from the fire department at the same time? Is that all right?
Is that how that works, or do they not even really get a say in it? It's more?
Generally, it's for Jefferson, it's myself, city administrator, or the mayor, or both, and then the city clerk. So they're there, they can write down the information, they know how to bill, cause we usually decide it right then and there.
So are, are there people from the council that are there to need to do or not?
Uh, generally, see, for the fire department there, I have one representative from the city council. Usually, I talk about stuff that there might be issues, and they're generally there also. But it's, uh, they don't want more than two, so obviously they don't want four or that ten minutes.
Right, okay.
But yeah, there's generally a council member there too.
So, yeah, we'll see if we can get that.
Who's gonna do the talking to the trustees?
Who's gonna represent the council essentially?
I guess it depends on when it is. You know, if we do it during the day, you know, if I'm available, I, I can. I guess we'll just have to set it up and, and see.
Well, and do we want Jack to be there?
Yeah, I think we gotta get the schedule and we can, you know, figure this out.
He's gonna listen. I need a certain person we need to call.
I can give you a number, Jerry.
Yeah, I'll give the trustees, I'm pretty sure I got it off my truck. It's not in the truck, it's on my desk, but I just got it today. I will let Brett know and he can pass it along to you guys.
And I think, give it to our city clerk, just because she's gonna be involved and need to know that. So give that, that information to Wendy, that's who we need to go through with this stuff.
Yeah.
I'll put it in the drop box.
Moving forward, thank you, Brett. Yeah, that'd be great, I just didn't.
In the meantime, before the next meeting, you people, we should, we need to write down what we think the fire department should do with keeping records and doing this and doing that, calling that. You guys make a list, what you think we should do.
And, and we need a monthly report. We did, we wanna, we wanna know how many calls are going out on and that kind of stuff. Um, these, these big um, expenses, even though apparently you don't have to answer to anybody if it's under ten thousand dollars, um, we would like to know that. You know, that way, when you hit us, if you hit us in March, hey, I don't have enough money left in my budget, um, you know, we can, you know, we at least have some idea of what's going on. You know, you got, you guys just, you know, get whatever and it's under ten thousand dollars and then all this stuff.
I agree. What do you just want from each other?
Yeah, what they, we would prefer from each other, but so.
Would like to have.
Would like to have.
That's the city code section is the total budget that's expended. If they're out of budget money, everything has to be approved through the council.
Say that again, louder.
So if they are out of money, like their budget money's gone, then everything would have to be approved through the council after that point.
Okay.
Unless, prior to it being expended by the city code, current city code, any less than ten thousand. Brett, that's chief, should just, you know, do until he's out of budget money.
So, I'm gonna thank you for repeating that, I just had it grasp it. So we gave them a budget of twenty-four thousand some odd dollars. And it's gone, so after that twenty-four thousand dollars, they should have been getting approval from the council of what he's saying.
Every dollar spent.
Every single dollar spent.
Yeah, to amend the budget.
Excuse me?
We, just, we don't have to, but.
We got a lot of chatter in here.
We have to discuss it, but on the other hand, on the other hand, we need to stay on top of, in your defense, how do you know if you don't know? So I, I get you guys, I scals, I bitch, I. You're not gonna know if you don't know, so just timeout, let me finish my conversation here. What I'm saying is, we gotta stay on top of it so we can tell them, your budget is, your. So in, in, the other side of the coin is, we want information from you, and we get information back. Budget back, is what I'm saying. And, and now that we maybe have a little bit of handle on what is going on, going down, moving forward, that's gonna open the door to communication, five thousand percent.
And that's, and I understand, it's been a mess, multiple city clerks in and out, I get that. But I, I've been asking for that for a long time, is once a month, let me have what's remaining of my budget, so I know what I'm working.
I, I, I can't tell you your loss.
It's hard to operate when you don't even know, A, what your budget is, or B, what's up.
Right.
And it'd be nice for me to see if something extra's coming out of it.
But your issue with budget, you know what your budget at the first year is.
No, no.
Jerry.
The city clerk should have always told you that.
So, a- again, again, we, we can't move forward, obviously, but we've got a new city clerk here. And that's, that is definitely our goal, to um, again, keep you abreast on what it is and you guys vice versa, keep us, you know, that's just gonna open the communication. So, um, I think that's what we'll need to work on a plan on how we're gonna do that.
That sounds great.
Any other comments that you guys want? What is our current budget? Do we know, like as of today's date, what are we working with? Not last year's, because we've already said that that's not being taken out of this year's budget. What is our budget as of today?
Brenda. Can you tell me, as we said today?
Current budget as it shows here, that was approved by the state, twenty-four thousand dollars. You've expensed eight thousand eight hundred fifty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents so far.
Now, is there something you can give them, so they have that? Um, a copy or anything, or no?
We can.
Not right now.
We can mock up a, a spreadsheet and provide that to you.
That would be great. That would be great.
So, in the next few days, in the next week, you can stop up and Wendy will have it for you.
Or?
I can give you my email, if you could just email it to me.
And then.
Anything else?
And then, the nineteen sixty-three agreement, are we going to do, try to do something to update this?
We're, we're gonna build a new one.
Okay.
And I think, you said there were two or three years, they, they uh, find, find, find tune it or.
Yeah, we try to meet with our townships. I've never seen that contract, don't know what's in it. But, the township, we try to meet at least once every three years. And I send them out fire reports every year in January, so that the townships know how many calls they have and what fire accident, that kind of thing.
Well, I've been connecting with the city council, the mayor, for going on forty years, thirty-five. I never knew we even had this.
And technically, unless something comes up, it's just, it's in a file.
We'll, we'll get it, we'll get it back, so.
Yeah, yeah, we'll get that.
Now again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna reiterate this. Do any of the fire department representatives have anything else they'd like to say, discuss?
I would like to get things straightened out.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. And, and, like I, I started off saying, that's our goal, to keep this going, and we're not trying to shut down anything. We just, we just can't go broke, and you guys can't go broke, and we gotta have fire protection. So, I think that we're on, right now, the right track, starting communication and being better. And I, I think, if there's a problem, let's, let's discuss it and.
Yeah, I think the best thing that could come out of this is getting the trustees involved and get, to where everybody knows what's going on.
And, cause obviously, the town of Grand Junction's furnished, just like all the gas, and you guys make runs out of the country, everything.
Yep, absolutely.
Are you guys, oh, go ahead.
I've read through this contract, and I see why, immediately why, they're not seeing any money. And seeing what they have in their accounts on fire protection. This says that no money transfers until a truck's purchased.
Till what?
Till the truck's purchased.
The truck is purchased.
And this agreement's with Junction Township, for you guys to house the truck. So, yeah, you're not getting any money, it's just sitting in an account out there.
Yeah, we'd like.
So from nineteen sixty-three, we should have some money somewhere.
Well, that is.
Interest, yes.
So with that, um, the Junction Township has bought and purchased. But that's purchased all of our apparatuses minus the rescue side.
I'm sorry, who did you say, the township?
The Junction Township. So they have always purchased the trucks. Now, the rescue side's a whole different thing, they don't do anything with that, that'd be, that's separate money, and that's a discussion for another day. But, they also have money set aside to where, God forbid, we go on a call tonight, one of those trucks get totaled, whether it be wreck, it burns up, whatever, the township has that money toward tomorrow. I can find a truck and go buy, until the insurance money comes back.
Yeah.
And now, once that insurance money comes back, I have no clue how that works between the township and the city's insurance. I don't know if that money's replaced, I have no idea. But alls I know is, there is enough money sitting there to buy us a new truck tomorrow, if, God forbid, something were to happen.
The township covers the insurance for the trucks?
No.
The city does not.
The city covers the insurance for all of our, all of our emergency vehicles.
They shouldn't, the township should. The Washington township covers the vehicles and the insurance.
Well, and not gonna interrupt, but I think that's in that agreement, cause I was once on the regi, fire department. So that's in the agreement with the township that are crappy old nineteen sixty-three.
Yeah.
Versus what Washington township has agreed to with Kirby. So I think that's part of, I mean, to me, this whole problem stems from the township and the city.
There's no communication between the township and the city.
Yeah, that's the whole problem there.
And so, are you guys, are they just using the township money, then if I understand this right, they're using the township money to just buy you new trucks, and then they don't have to do anything else with it? That's all they're doing?
Right, and that's, I mean, I don't, I don't wanna say that's all they're doing, I mean, that's, that's a very large expense. That's how that statement is, that is not exactly.
So here's the deal, it's almost council's fault for not having this meeting with the township, although I can't say it's our fault because we're just gonna.
Sometime between nineteen sixty-three and the day, one of y'all should have.
Yeah, there's sixty years of fault, no matter who's fault it is.
Exactly, yeah, and it's my fault, cause I've been on this for how long, and it's just now.
A hot minute.
Seen it, but, um, I, we will, obviously, gonna meet the township and get things straightened out.
Um, the other thing, with the gas out to the.
Sure.
Yes, we need to start keeping track.
We've been telling Rod.
Have you?
Yes.
Okay, and so everything, all right, because for one thing, um, we've gotta keep track of how much we're gonna need, that can be worked into the budget, and when it gets winter time for the diesel fuel, that kind of stuff. So, yeah, we need to keep it close.
Either myself or Mark who suspects a drop anytime one of the vehicles has gotten fuel.
Okay, so it's always you two, one of you two happens there? Okay, okay, good, good, okay. Um, anybody have anything else?
Do, do you see any immediate future problems with any of the trucks after this, if this is fixed?
I mean, I mean, I know things break down, but, I mean, other than, you know, I mean, I don't know how old these trucks are or anything, I mean, Brett. Yeah, our front pumper, yes. The one that had issues out to, after the rush fire today, I don't know what that's going to entail.
And it's di, it's, so, the problem that you're talking about now is different than the problem with the pump that we're fixing?
It is, yes.
Okay, and when do we try to get something done with that?
So, Mark heard me wrong, but when the guy was there, he kinda looked, he kinda looked at it, right? Couldn't, couldn't really find anything.
Okay.
But something's, definitely, I mean, it's.
That truck's a nineteen ninety.
And it's, um, so it's a motor problem?
Uh, no, I think it's got, it's got to do with the water system, the pump system.
Oh, okay, okay.
But it's not anything of the motor.
You know, when you guys, um, when you get that, if you could just, hey, you know, we're looking at, at getting this fixed and it's gonna be roughly fifty-five hundred dollars, something like that, let us know, if you would, just give, give us the heads up so that we're not blindsided by it, it just, it just makes it easier, just makes it easier. Um, and then when the bill comes in, we're not in sticker shock over it. So, okay, you guys, you guys good?
Yeah.
Okay.
We will, um, be in touch and keep on what things, things are happening.
Yeah, keep me down.
Jack, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Yeah, actually, I did, uh, I probably just wanna speak with one or two, yeah.
Okay, well, yeah, yeah, we'll catch it, yeah, okay. Um, this is it, thank you for being quiet.
I'm gonna make a, I need to make a motion, you're joining the meeting.
I.